A motion we open the meeting at six.
Second. Okay, polling the members. Dave Chanel.
Yes.
Darlene Sedano.
Yes.
Sean. Sean Pearson.
Yes. Sorry, I was muted.
And um.
Dave Funioli.
Dave Funioli.
Yep.
And Catigan says yes, too. So the motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as provided?
So move. I'll second that.
Okay, polling the members again. Dave Chanel.
Yes.
Darlene Sedano.
Olive Steen.
Sean Pearson.
Yes.
Dave Funioli.
Yes.
And Catigan votes yes as well. All right, so that's out of the way.
And I'll make a motion that we open the hearing of J. Smart Contracting LLC.
Second.
At five forty-six.
Second.
Okay, polling the members again. Dave Chanel.
Yes.
Darlene Sedano.
Yes.
Sean Pearson.
Yes.
Dave Funioli.
Yes.
And Catigan votes yes as well, so the hearing is open.
Can you appoint David as a voting member, please?
Absolutely. Dave Funioli will be a voting member for the purposes of this hearing. And Dave, could you read the notice, please?
Can do. Notice is hereby given that the town's only Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one, at five forty-five P. M. via remote public meeting on the application of J. Smart Contracting LLC for the property located at H. F. Street, map fifty-one, block thirty-eight, lot zero, for an appeal of the building commissioner's decision dated August twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-one, under one forty-five sixty-four. Appealing the finding that states the applicant is in violation of sections one forty-five twenty-seven for a use that is not permitted in a downtown commercial district and or special permit under one forty-five sixty-five F. And one forty-five eighteen of the zoning bylaws seeking a positive finding under Mass General laws, chapter forty-eight, section six of a change of use of a legal, legal pre-existing non-conforming use of public may join the meeting at Zoom, meeting code, whatever. Party position is speak in support of or in opposition to this application may do so in writing prior to the hearing or at a hearing in person or represented by an agent or attorney. Copies of this application are available for review in the offices of the town clerk and zoning board office during business hours. William Catigan, Chairman.
Thank you. So let's see, why don't we have Mr. Pastor and present his arguments, please?
Yes, thank you, members of the board and and public. The my client purchased this property in March of two thousand and twenty-one. He purchased it. There was a there'd been a number of uses for this property going back many years, all commercial. The most recent was as a machine shop. When the previous owner, I believe, was by the named, and I don't know if I'm pronouncing it correctly, Ho Pham. Mr. Pham purchased this property and and in two thousand and fourteen and sought and received a special permit to operate it as a as a machine shop, and it has been in operation until my client purchased it in two thousand and twenty-one. I understand that the nature of that machine shop was it was an automatic, they made parts for missiles for the government, and it was an automated twenty-four seven a machine shop. My client uses is much less onerous, though he does. He does do work with machining and metals. He also does work with wood, glass, plastics. He's primarily focuses on the machine. He does sculptures, work with with metals. He does a lot, all one on. Does a lot of functional art, and so he does sculptures. He was recently, not too long ago, he was commissioned by the Boston Bruins to to create and design a poker table only for the Boston Bruins. So it's an interesting, much less onerous use of this in terms of what was used before, although he does do quite a bit of metalwork in this location. It's not open to the public. It's basically a shop, and it's very consistent with what's been used since two thousand and fourteen. I understand, and from my understanding, I'm coming into this late, so I'm playing a little catch-up. What I understand from the correspondence between the building inspector and and my client were a couple of things. One, it was a a an understanding, or the building inspectors believed that the property had been abandoned, which I don't believe is supported by either the facts or the circumstance of this. I believe the Mr. Pham operated this building until he passed away suddenly in April of two thousand and nineteen. I provided his death certificate to the board earlier today, and my client purchased it in March of two thousand and twenty-one, less than two years after after the death. I've also supplied documentation from Mr. Pham's brother, who was listed as president of the company. He had filed corporate filings in two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, and actually did not dissolve the company until two thousand and twenty-one, till a few weeks after the actual purchase by my client. So in terms of of being set up as a as a a commercial property, it's it's been, I think, since pre-zoning, it's been a commercial property. It's certainly consistent with the two thousand and fourteen special permit. The second thing that I understand and and as I understand was that the permit was duly applied for and duly issued in two thousand and fourteen, the special permit to operate as a machine shop by Mr. Pham. But I understand that one of the issues from the building inspector was that it was issued, but Mr. Pham never recorded it. I did a little research today, and and I spoke to attorney who handled my client's closing. I can't ask Mr. Pham, since he passed away in two thousand and nineteen, what happened or or why it wasn't recorded. But I understand that that's correct. I think the building inspector is correct. The the special permit was issued but not recorded. I've sought to remedy that situation, and I've sent it in to be recorded today. I expect that tomorrow I'll have the book and page number for the recording of the special permit. So I think that we've been able to cure that defect, as it were. And now, so I believe the issue will remain as to whether or not it was abandoned, and I don't believe that there's any real evidence that there was any intent or or actual activity that would indicate abandonment of the previous use.
Well. Yeah, that's an interesting argument. So what you're saying is there's less than two years between the death of Mr. Pham, and I guess you're assuming that he worked right up until he died. He must have died in the shop or something.
Well, there's more than that. There's I've also sent into the I've also sent into the board the corporate filings of the corporation for both nineteen and twenty, and it wasn't dissolved until twenty-one at the time of the sale. Now, remember, this is an automated factory that the machines were self-loading and producing materials. So so, yes, there's no indication. And not only that, not only that, but the two years, so there's not two years. There's by any stretch of the imagination, it's not two years. Even if there were two years, the courts have looked at not only the two-year period. That two-year period is not a magic number. It really looks at, it speaks to the intent of the parties. And then we'll look at what the parties did intentionally, what their actions were that indicated an intent to abandon, to abandon the property. Nobody dies intentionally. So Mr. Pham's death is not is not some magic thing, and his brother indicated that he is president of the corporation continued after his death. The property was then by the estate promoted and sold as a commercial property as a machine shop. So there was no intent by the estate to abandon the property, to abandon the use from the special permit in two thousand and fourteen. And certainly, there was no indication from my client to abandon the use. So not only it's it's more than simply the dates of of death and sale being less than two years. There's a clear continuation of the intent to use it in that in that consistent with the special permit.
One more question. Was was the property held by the corporation, or was it held by an individual?
My understanding was it was held by Cam Engineering, Inc., Mr. The previous company. That's my understanding of it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
James LaClair, one seventy-one, Fitchburg Road, Townton, Mass. I built that building back to at least nineteen sixty-one. That building has had multiple uses. That building was a printing place for papers at one time.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We're not. We're not open for public discussion yet. So, Mr. Leclair, if you could hold your thoughts until we.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay, I do have a comment for you, Roy.
Yes.
The quick claim deed is, without butchering the name, first of the estate of of, again, the the scene, and it's not a corporation. It's actually an individual.
Oh, for the for the estate?
Right, right. So it's this. So the property previously was held by was held individually, not not as an entity. Just let you know. And a couple of questions, Roy. You might I I don't want to get into a legal. I went with you. I don't necessarily agree with the intent aspect of your argument. So because from your position, as long as I have the intent, even if I don't do anything physically, that property continues to be in a in a commercial function, which I disagree with a hundred percent on that. The abandonment itself, I mean, if he passes, he passes, and I I agree that that if it continues on, if it's within a two-year period. But just the fact that he files paperwork in the Secretary of State's site for, you know, his corporate reviews and all that stuff, that doesn't show the court that the business is going to continue. That's just that's just administrative paperwork. It has nothing to do with the physical workings of the property. How do you get past that?
Well, I understand that the property was was in operate, continued to be in operation. I've seen no evidence that it ceased at any time. This was a fully automated. This was a fully automated building where the employee showed up once in a while to put in raw materials. It was self-loading, and the machinery built these parts for the missiles. So it was it was a it was a basically a machine shop manufacturing that that continued. I mean, I've spoken to, I've had something, a quick note, although it's hard to understand, from his brother, as I indicated, that it it continued after after my after the individual's death, but there's no indication that anything would have stopped before that. And it was clearly fully in in, I mean, we use the two dates of the the death and the and the purchase, just as it's very simple. It's less than it's less than a two-year period. I mean, the brother has indicated it continued after he died. He was the president of the company. Mr. Pham wasn't even the president of the company at the time.
Do we have an affidavit?
I have a I don't have an affidavit. I have a statement from him, but not an affidavit. But he's, we also have the corporate filings indicating he's president of the of the company. Wasn't dissolved until two thousand and twenty-one.
Yeah, like I said, Roy, the corporate filings doesn't mean squat to me for a continuation of a business. It doesn't. That doesn't do anything. I mean, you're not. You can't get past.
Well, I mean. But but what indication do you have that they weren't in business when he died? There's there's nothing. There's nothing there.
I have a question. Was the machinery still in the building when you purchased it? Or like, when did when was the machinery for that use taken out of the building?
The machinery was sold with the premises. So my client bought the building, and he ended up moving the machinery. The machinery was in there the entire time.
So for for my fellow board members, I'm going to throw something out here at you. From my memory, way back when, do you remember when someone came before us for the Main Street property across from Joe Shank, the one that's the one that's a hazardous.
Different one, sorry.
Twenty-one, twenty-one.
That building is zoned residential. It's been sitting empty for years and years now, and somebody came before us and wanted to do something with it. And we made a decision based upon the stuff that was still in the building. They were still displaying carpet remnants or samples or something like that. And we considered that. I don't remember why, but I just want to say that, to me, sets like a precedent or, okay. If you didn't allow them to do something commercial in that building, it would render the building useless, because it's a resident, it's a it's a commercial structure. It's in a residential zone. Clearly, the use was abandoned, like they weren't doing anything for a long time, but we considered that. Just throwing that out there.
That, yeah, I don't know who was on that board, his only board. It certainly wasn't me.
I think you may have been.
No.
It was a long time ago.
No, that's not. That would not happen.
Throwing it out there.
Yeah.
How would it have been run without with the the person in charge not being alive? I don't understand that, because wouldn't the.
Well, the the, again, the president of the company gave his, it was his brother. So it wasn't. It wasn't a one-man operation. That's like any company or any 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 business that you have. So his brother ran it, and then they put it on the market as a commercial property. As a machine shop was went on the market, my client ended up buying it. So there's no indication that. I mean, I I can find no indication that the use was abandoned or anything else. And and clearly, from the time he died and it went into then his estate became. Plus, you have, I mean, the courts have looked at, I know, David, you disagree, but the courts have looked at what the intent is and the circumstances. And in this case, not only do we have the gentleman died, I can only assume unintentionally, but you also had COVID and 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 the shutdown of businesses for significant period during this time period that we're talking about. So there's no indication. There's no indication that it wasn't. It was ever shut down intentionally or or abandoned, but certainly not for not for two years. We just don't. We don't. I couldn't find anything that in would indicate otherwise.
Are there any payroll records? Because even a screw machine has to have some guy puts material in it every once in a while.
Yeah, and I don't know who's. I don't know who was doing it. Again, I just got involved in this, and I'm looking at it, and we've, you know, I've gotten something from his brother indicating that he kept it going until they they sold it. But I I've been all have. I've only been able to contact and deal with the attorney who was involved with the sale and represented the estate. And he represented to me that it was still an ongoing institution, and I got a quick little note that's hard to understand from the brother. So I don't want to, you know, I I don't want to misrepresent anything, but I can tell you that the estate attorney and the brother both indicated that it continued as a machine shop for some time after the death in at that time period. So I I requested, but I have not yet received anything else that would look like the records that you're asking for. That's what's been represented to me on a on a due diligence, reasonable inquiry.
I'm not sure what we're asking of the applicants. I I'm not seeing that there's an abandonment issue here, and we're we're discussing it, so. If if the guy was alive less than two years ago, and he was. I don't understand why we're belaboring this.
Darling, did you read Eric's letter and the reason for the appeal?
The, yeah, a while ago. The way I saw it was.
That's that's the justice. That's the basis for the discussion.
There was a disagreement in the I didn't see that it had anything to do with the previous use, but that he didn't agree with the previous building inspector.
No, there was. There was three parts to it. One of them was abandonment. The other one was the disagreement as to what Rich Hanks had done. But the primary thing was was the the appeal period passed past the time for. Somebody's. Somebody has. Does somebody have two lines open? Because I'm getting a feedback. Is that just? Is it just me?
There was a little feedback in there, yes.
I'm getting just a little bit, but it's not interfering with with much.
Yeah, this is my fifth hearing today. I'm getting a little testy on the on the echoes. So if I if I could, can we, Eric, could you expand on your your letter of August twenty-sixth, if you would?
Yeah, absolutely. So the state has separated abandonment and non-use. The building has not been used for two years, according to the clerk's office. The business certificate expired in August of two thousand and nineteen. I've been here a year and four months. I've never seen anybody use it. I was here before Jeff bought it. They weren't using it. I drive by it every day. It's behind the office.
I guess I'm being the devil's advocate on this.
The other thing, too, is that Cam Engineering also has a location in Lowell. So if of course, they still have a business.
Excuse me, Eric, if I could, could I implore everybody to put themselves on mute, and if you're not talking, please? Roy, you you I can hear you in your. Thank you.
So I I mean, and as far as the special permit, it's a site plan review. Richard Hanks said it was a use allowed by right. I disagree. I don't think that it's a use allowed by right in the downtown commercial district. The definition of what the downtown commercial district is designed for, it does not fit. And it also says other uses not provided for, and those types of uses are provided for in the industrial district.
Okay, if I if I could inject that, Eric, I agree with you that it's not a it's not a a use by right. But if the if the pre if the prior owner was using it as a machine shop, then the question, and it was issued based on a a valid permit at the time. So the question then becomes, was that prior use abandoned? If it was, then then I would agree with you that he can't. He can't do it. But if it if it was, if the prior machine shop continued to within a two-year period before Mr. Smart bought it and became instead using it, then it's not a matter of it's not a matter of right or wrong. It's a matter of of the abandonment question.
Yeah, no, I agree with that. I totally agree with that. I mean, the other thing that's at play here is the fact that they have approved their machine shop. Jeff's a contractor. Everybody knows him. He's a carpenter. He builds stuff in his shop, and he installs it. That's not machining. I've got no evidence that you are machining anything. I haven't so far since day one.
Okay.
I'm I'm a little baffled by that response. I I understand that the that Eric, the new building inspector, is is new to the job, but clearly he is. It appears to be. I don't want to say personal, because I'm sure he's very professional when he when he does this, but but I I'm not really sure what what where this is coming from at this point. My client is willing to open up his shop and have the members of the board come look to see what he does. And and again, he bought it as a machine shop, and he does machining there. He does other things as well. But there's nothing that's inconsistent with the the previous use. So I I'm not sure how to respond to that, other than my client's willing to open up his shop and and have you come look and see what what he does. Driving by and making assumptions and and reaching unsupported conclusions is probably not the best way to do this. We'd be willing to meet with you and take a look at the shop.
Well, I have more, but Jeff turned me down. Except in email, he's not willing to have me take a look at it.
Well, I'm not sure what.
They try that, but here's the difference. So a machine shop is as a factory. It's a F-type use. You're not expecting to have a dumpster outside. You're not expecting to have a bobcat outside. You're not expecting to have a trailer outside. You're not expecting any of those things. It is a different use completely.
Now, you just, can I?
No, 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 it's it's okay. I understand. I understand.
Hey, Roy, Roy, excuse me for a second.
Yeah.
I don't want to. I don't want to be the policeman here, and I'm kind of like Bill's Bill Strongarm on these kind of things. Direct your comments to the chair, please, not to each other.
Yes.
It's totally inappropriate what you guys are doing at this point. What I will ask is a follow-up to to the building inspector's statements is, what kind of machinery does Mr. Smart have in that facility?
I have all kinds in there. That's hard to hard to describe.
No, I I was a machinist for a for a number of years, so humor me. What kind of what kind of machine machinery do you have?
Come take a look. Everything I have is either.
I'm asking you a question.
I'm trying to tell you. I it's I have track saws. I have routers. I have welders, drill presses, just unbelievable amount of stuff.
So. Do you have any millers?
Any wire?
And do you have any milling machines, any lathes?
I sold those. I sold those that came with the property.
So I think the difference may be that the difference between the previous machine shop and my client is the previous machine shop made parts, certain parts that were automatically fed and sent out. My client makes one-on specialized items. One on.
Have you been to the Ford, Javina, Grotten? Anybody?
They're our client. Yep, I have.
All the steelwork down in there, all the lighting. They have ten of my high-top tables, all the foot rails, any steel you see down in there, plus the furniture is mine. I built every bit of that. So there's part of my machining. I've seen all the foot rails, and that includes set screws and drilling holes, Eric, to be able to do that.
So I think what he does is it's a different kind of machining, but it is machining nonetheless. He does one-on-one items to order and not a a not a kind of a factory that that prints out the same piece over and over again.
And if I may, excuse me, just I want to respond to Eric's comment about my machinery down there. I took out over fifty yards of garbage all through that whole yard that was left there for, I don't know, twenty, thirty years. Who knows? The place was a dump. I probably spent five thousand dollars with with G. W. Shaw just in containers, getting rid of everything. My skid steer and mini excavator were down there to do that. So I don't know what his problem with that is.
They just keep donkey the person.
And I've been fixing my driveway. Anybody that knows that property understands that that road, H. Street, runs both ways, so when it rains, it all ends up in my parking lot. It was so bad the last time, the water is touching the building. I spoke to Jim Smith, the highway superintendent, and they're supposed to be cleaning out that catch basin at some point, but it does not go anywhere. It's just it's about twenty feet deep, Keith Laternal told me. So they're going to put filler pipes through my driveway to try to alleviate that flooding. So if my machines are there, it's so I can work on that property.
All right, well. Where we go from here?
Well, we basically have two issues, Bill. We have the appeal of the zoning enforcement office's decision. August twenty-sixth, we have that. And that's, for the most part, that's based on pre-existing, whether it's abandoned or not. I mean, I think that's a pretty, that should be a factual basis. Aside from what some people have said here about intent, it's factual. If did it continue for the within the last two years? If it did, then it's continued. If it didn't, then it's not. And if that's the case, and if if we uphold the appeal, if I mean, if we deny the appeal, then he's also applied for a special permit, which, I mean, in my opinion, it's not. It's not a permitted. Which, I mean, in my opinion, it's not, it's not a permitted use in that zone, a machine shop. So, I mean, the only thing he's gonna, the only way he's gonna get, get any traction is if we, we decide to overturn the zoning enforcement officer's decision, that it's an abandoned use, that's my opinion.
Mr. Chairman, when you can open the public comment?
Not yet, Jim.
Soon. I think we need some, like, more evidence on this abandonment thing in terms of documentation from the previous owner and.
Well, would a, would a, well, I wanna make sure that we are on the same page, would an affidavit from the attorney or the brother was the president of the company suffice?
I, I wouldn't be happy with an affidavit from somebody, I'd like some evidence, you know, like payroll.
Can I ask, can I ask if there's any evidence that it was not in use?
Uh, you know, we have the building, we have the building inspector's testimony. I haven't seen anybody in there for ages either.
But the building inspector indicated he drove by and didn't see anybody, but this is a automated factory, there is nobody to see, coming out or, or different times, so I, I'm, I'm just curious of what good faith basis there is to suggest that it was not in use up to the time the gentleman died.
Roy, this, this is a rebuttal presumption, it's been stated that it's been abandoned, your job now is, I mean, you have to rebut that, however you wanna do it.
I, I, I appreciate that, and, and David, I, I understand that, and I'm willing to go see what else I can get, but I'm, but normally, there's, there should be some good faith involved in, in, in suggesting that, that it was abandoned. And the, I don't, other than, I, I haven't seen any good faith basis, other than we drove by and didn't see anybody. Uh, so I don't know, I don't know what, if there's, in other words, you're asking me to rebut a, a presumption that I, I have no clue where it came from, or what the basis for it is. I'll do what I can, because that's what the board is asking for.
Right, I was gonna say, Jim, I mean, Roy, for, for us to continue this conversation back and forth, you know, if you don't, if you don't give, give us something to support the, the premise that it hasn't been.
I will produce affidavits along with any other records that I can come up with, which I don't wanna represent, so I wanna make sure that, that they're, they're, they are there, but I will, I will present what I, what I can, and.
Roy, so just a section, like Bill's talking about payroll, if, if the thing was a, you know, if it was a shadow guy that was going up there every couple of days to fill a hop rock, that may not work for you, but, you know, even utility bills that show, because machines, even if they're running automatically, there's, there's gonna be some high, high utility bills, as opposed to.
Okay, okay, I think that's, I think that's a reasonable request, and I, I will make the calls to the, again, to the, to the estate attorney, I'm assuming the estate attorney would have something.
I would think so, and, and from my, and, and we haven't heard from the others, because I'm, I kind of, kind of, I'm overbearing sometimes when I talk. From my perspective, if, if, if you guys can show that the, that the, that there was no abandonment, I think you win. I think, I think the, I think it's overturned, I don't think you're gonna get anywhere on, on a special permit, on, for that particular use. But I think the, the abandonment issues, I think that's your, I think that's your solid, solid claim.
So, in that case, I would ask for another date, for, give us an opportunity to get something other than, other than what we have from the Secretary of State.
I have no problem with that.
Sounds good.
Bill, if I could, Jim's been wanting to talk, why don't we hold?
He was invisible, but he wants to talk.
Yeah, no, I happen to be in, by private clothing right now, and I don't wanna be on camera, but I've been familiar with that property, with, with going back into the mid-sixties, riding around there with a bicycle when it was so powerful hardware. Bets Curry, Bates Corrugated Boss, across from when you old Tumber's Package Store and the bus terminal now, used to do all the corrugated packaging, and they did a lot with Sterilite, et cetera. They used to use that building, they had a Shear set up in there. Over the years, many times, that building has been left vacant, because nobody had any legitimate usage for it. I've seen it in there when there was a printing fest in there, doing advertisements and commercial stuff. That building is a very nice building, although it's very limited because it's small, but a lot of different things have gone in there over the years. And I don't see where all this is coming through, when the, the gentleman passed away, Mr. Smart purchased it, and now you're putting it in the disringer. I think it's wrong.
Yeah, that's what we call the bylaws, Jim, so we'll leave it at that.
All right, what have we got for a date?
If, if I may, did have a few other butters on the call, I don't know if Jim had, is the only one that wanted to comment or not, but the board is meeting next on December 8th. There is one public hearing scheduled, and there is a window of time that the board can meet on that night. So, the meeting can, it will end at 7:00, because there's a meeting behind it. So, I don't know if you wanna go ahead on into December.
Okay, can we, can we meet, if it's, if we're meeting at 5:30 on the 8th, can we, well, first of all, Roy, does that give you enough time?
I, I don't know, without making the effort, David, it's hard for me to tell.
I, I think that's probably too short for you, if you have to contact.
In terms of getting utility bills and things, I'm not sure how long that's gonna, it's not in my control, so I, I need some time.
You wanna give it, you, you wanna give it till, like, in January, then? Roy, you wanna give it to January?
That would be, that would probably be better.
I agree, getting a lawyer to call you back is really difficult sometimes. Just saying.
I'll leave it to the board then, the 5th of January, the 12th of January, those are Wednesday nights in January.
If we, if we can do, if we can do the 12th, that would work better for me.
That works, that works for me too.
Right, okay. So, is there a motion to continue this hearing until January 12th, at 5:30, Ben?
Give us a chance to get.
5:45, okay.
So moved.
Is there a second, polling the members, Dave Chanel?
Yes.
Darlene Sedano? Dave Funnyoli?
Yes.
And Katigan votes yes as well. So, the motion carries, and that's what we'll, what we'll be doing. Thank you for your attention, what else?
Thanks, guys.
There's just a couple of, couple of other things, there's correspondence, citizen planner training collaborative, the fall training webinars, highly recommend members to, to look over the list, I put it in the SharePoint folder. There's a lot of really good classes that they're offering, and they're all online. So, those are available. And then there is a memorandum from, from the Board of Selectmen announcing that the town meeting has been scheduled on December 14th, is it? I've gotta pull it up.
Yes.
It is in the Great Hall, correct, Dave?
Yes.
At 7:00 PM?
Yes.
When you gonna run for selectman again?
Same time you do, Dave.
So, the answer's never?
Never say never, but I'll sign up right after.
That's funny.
That's it. And that's, yeah, 6:22, that's all I have. I saw you all have, yeah, so we, December 8th is the next meeting, and it's at 5:30. And again, like I mentioned earlier, there is a, and, there is a end point on that meeting, so please, everybody, log in on time.
The list is getting dark at meeting time now.
Can I ask a question, Joey?
I'll allow more time next time, now that I know I'm not just clicking a link.
When did you join, Vicky, the, the hearing we just had, did you join?
That was, it was 5:50.
Yeah, that's what I got, not bad.
Yeah, yeah, I apologize for being late, my doctor's appointment ran over, so.
Always tells me.
I was just asking, because of participation in the next hearing, if you could, if you could qualify, if you participated in the hearing or not. You know, if you were around for all the, all the comments.
I think she's heard enough. Okay.
First off, did, did we officially close the hearing, or?
No, we continued it then.
Okay, you continued it.
Yeah, and that's, that's sufficient, that's, that's analogous to the closing of it.
Okay, we didn't need to take a voice, voice vote on that?
We took.
I thought we did, yeah.
Making sure.
Always pull the members on Zoom. Stay warm, you folks.
All right, darling, thanks for you giving your son's name and for the electrical. All right, guys. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Yeah, German. Okay, thank you.
Good night, everyone.